They say they big river now. They gonna go in the county board. We stay for a center. We got to go. We got to go. I come to my family. Yeah, we did. They got two of those bodies.
Chairman. So I'm a boss right now. He don't tell me down that way. I'll see if they do.
I have a minister in the house. I'll scroll deep. I need to open that place. You do the vouch and files.
We'll be all standing, please. Oh, heaven and hallelujah. We come once again thanking you for the blessings that you've given us. We come seeking your guidance in the spirit of unity that we may do that which is right in your eyesight. In the name of our Lord and Savior. Amen.
I'd call the Tallahassee County Board of Supervisors back into session. This meeting this afternoon is to discuss redistricting. Also, we want to apologize for being tardiness. We had our board meeting, our regular board meeting this morning was scheduled to be in Sumner, and we was over there this morning. And we had a long agenda, and we was trying to pack everything in into the three or four hours. We, some of the things that we had to discuss that lasted longer than that we expected to last, and that's why we saw it running late. And we also was trying to, we was downstairs trying to get all the documents that needed to be here for this meeting. And, but we're here for the purpose of discussing redistricting. Let's talk about that for a while. This is not a public hearing. This is not a public hearing. It's considered a regular Board of Supervisors meeting. The, what we're going to talk about is the county plan that had been presented, and also the three plans that the community have submitted. And I'm opening the floor to anything that you want to talk about concerning redistricting. But we do want you to be everyone that's going to speak, to be respectful, to be competent of the time, as well as by don't consume all the time, and give everybody here a chance to say what they want to say. This is your plan, this is your county, the community, all of ours together, and I want, anybody that want to say anything, we'll try to recognize you consuming time. Now, we not going to be here all evening. We're going to try to do this if possible, and for as my concern, for as my concern, we can reset the meeting and go farther from there. But that's my concern. It takes my, the other four, my other four colleagues to finally make that final decision. The reason I'm saying that, I understand Mr. Hargis got another meeting, and I have another meeting this afternoon, that's been perfect to me. Not saying that this is not important, not saying that. What I'm saying is, is that if it's that pressing, then we can reset and start back in the morning, for me, you know, my concern. We don't have an agenda, so from here, we'll start hearing from the community.
On what? Just let, these people here have never even seen the amount that the county has grown up, nor have they seen the amount that the community has grown up. My thinking was that you all would have the demographer here, who the county is paying for, and I'm pretty sure you paying him a good dollar. He is not here to explain nothing to you all, and he's the one that's hired by you all. So I was asking Mr. Reynolds a few months ago, who was the demographer going to be here? And he said, no. So who is going to explain to you all? The Board of Supervisors is responsible for the amount grown up by the county. So now who's going to explain that?
Well, I got to admit, the demographers is not here, nor do we have a court reporter. Be honest with you, I really don't know how to answer that question, to be honest with you. But we'll try to do the best thing we can since they is not here. Neither one of the demographers is here. We'll do the best we can.
To be here. The court reporter and the demographer to do the county plan.
No. I've been looking for Mr. Iba Minister, Mr. Dawes.
Dawes had been starting to sign his sheet, so I don't know where.
Yes, he's downstairs. So, so I don't know was he, was Mr. Dawes, did he advise them to come? And that's who housed that fellow. Is, uh, Mr. Dawes, County Minister, who housed, ordering the court reporter and also notifying the demographers of the county. And that's how it been done up to now, and that's how we, I guess, myself was looking for it to be done for this meeting. Apparently it wasn't.
Well, if it would be helpful, I would be glad to give a very brief explanation of what this redistricting process is about, what the county did, what the community did as a basis for, and show what the maps look like as a basis for going forward in the discussion. That would get us to the next place.
If I could say, I don't think there's a motion on the, on the floor unless I'm incorrect to adopt anything at this point.
It's not how the meeting was opened, Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
The community participation at this point, and the first question was raised was, since a lot of people are here who may not have had a chance to hear this discussion before, because they're ready to at least start it out so people will understand what's going on. Since the demographers for the, for the supervisors aren't here, I was offering to...
Something that might be helpful, very helpful, and I would, I would say that, you know, the, uh, the, in the minutes of the last meeting, that there is the transcript, you know, of the plan that was proposed, Plan Six, I think there've been two additional plans proposed. The plan that a public hearing was held on was published in the newspaper, and I think that a summary of that plan could be given, there's a newspaper article here, and I think that would be, you know, copies of that can be made, and that has been posted at the two courthouses now for, you know, several, I believe about six weeks or more, and so copies of that can be given.
But I think what they're saying, Tom, is that, that some people that's not here, and I'm being all fairness to people not here in the community, I, I think I'm one of the, uh, one of the, other than the layperson being one of the top demographers, and most of the people walking that courthouse won't, wouldn't know what they're looking at, a man that's on the move. So, uh, but when I was, I think what they were saying is, is they were expecting us to have somebody here to where they could ask questions and, and saying what, what is that, or why I live, or what, what you doing, why y'all drawing it this way or drawing it that way? Because looking at it downstairs is, we have to do that by law, but most of the people don't understand it. And I think out of all the people in the county, for as the community and the layperson, I'm probably one of the, and not bragging, but I am, I think I'm, I'm pretty good with this, other than you, other than Tommy, I'm, I'm pretty good with it. So, Mr., going back to your concern, Mr. Sayers, is that the community have a right to present, or bring, or say, so if you would like to do that, then I don't see why we won't entertain it. But again, let's try to be as brief as possible, and my understanding, and I'm going to close with this, my understanding, the agenda for today was supposed to be, is that the commu, the, the community has submitted two plans, the county submitted a plan, and the, uh, community submitted their third plan. The idea was to come today to discuss, in my opinion, and, and the colleagues may weigh in, if they would, is to discuss one of the four plans, discuss it. Could we move forward with a plan that's already been submitted? Are there, are there, do we need to go in negotiation with a plan that both sides can deal with? Uh, do the county need to move on and adopt? That's what I thought the discussion was going to be around. And, and if not, we'll lay that groundwork. Because until, if we don't deal with that issue, them issues, we, we won't get there. So, build the groundwork, and I'm laying it.
Uh, Mr., let me, let me say one thing. I thought that we was here for to see if the county could go ahead on and adopt the last plan that the community brought. Now, it's bad to say, but I don't understand, every time that we've had a public hearing, the only people that showed up at these public hearings were, you had a few white citizens, and they didn't present any kind of plan, and you've had the black community that has presented three plans to the county Board of Supervisors. Now, my time is just as valuable as anybody else', and I thought we was here, the purpose of this meeting today was to see could we work from that plan, since we brought that plan, we went through that plan, uh, the last plan that we presented, and I thought we was going to try to work through that plan to see if we could find any common ground with the Board of Supervisors, so that they could adopt that plan, or they could argue about that plan, or say... I, I haven't heard any objection from any supervisor on the plan that we presented. Now, for us to keep on having our people to crank out plans, and you all not do nothing on them, but just sit here, call a meeting, no demographer here, or anything to explain anything, is there any objection that you all know right now to the plan that we have on the floor, the last plan, the community put on the floor? Uh, Plan Number Six. Now, as far as I'm concerned, and, and, at first I'm concerned, that is the only plan that the community has presented, is that correct? Well, that is the only plan that's been presented by, well, the plans that we have presented to you all are the only plans that any community people have presented, is that correct? So everything else is demographer and Board of Supervisor's plan, is that correct?
That's correct, for as I know. Uh, I think what I've just stated was, put most actually to your question, Mr. Meeks, is that I've put on the table the premise for us to get started, that way we won't have to go back and hash up the first public hearing, and won't have to go back and hash up the second public hearing. My premise that I'm putting on the table is that we have four plans on the table. We discussed them at the, the first, two plans that the community submitted at the first public hearing. We, at the second public hearing, we discussed it, a plan that the county had put in the paper and presented, and also the community submitted a third plan. So to keep from going back there, it was my understanding when we left the last public hearing, what was going to be discussed today was, is the, the county was going, we was going to discuss the, uh, either one of them two plans, uh, either one of the two plans, the first county committee submitted, Plan Six of the community, and the county plan. That's, for as I know, there's no other plans that have been, has been presented to us, unless one ready to be presented to us today. Having anything been done, any changes made to the county plan, so we can go forward discussing, what do we need to do? To, what do we need to do as the county and community to move forward, one of these plans out of the four? Now, at the last meeting, I stated that I, stated my rejection to the county plan, and in favor and support the redistricting plan that the, Plan Six that they submitted. So this is where I feel that we need to start off from. The county haven't changed their plan. They haven't changed their plan. So now, is that we going to hear requests from the community and let you know why we staying on the plan? It was understood that we as a county was going to go back, look at Plan Six, go back and look at Plan Six, and state our favor, our rejection against it. So that's what I thought I done when I laid them premises a few minutes ago to get us started in a dialogue of communication.
From the way that we... My name is Robert, the State Representative, Lieutenant of Tallahassee, Executive of the Floor of Sunflower County, I'm also a citizen in this area. My concern, I mean, seem like to me we going around in circles. I know, uh, you don't, you don't have a demographer here, now want to automatically leave last time. And if we're going to do the thing, why can't we adopt Plan Six today, since don't nobody want to talk about it much, so low? I think the last time we had Board Supervisor McQuarrie, he gave dead of a moment, then he said, "Worry, you got to make a statement, but he won't say nothing good to eat." It's bad to say that you all sitting around here saying, "Oh," and hey, this county is broke, you spend a little bit, $400,000, $2,000,000 in pay, say you still paying on lawsuits. Seem like to me that's what we here for now. We don't have nobody on there explaining the plan to them, and don't seem like nobody wants to plan them. I mean, you know, we sitting there, and we know what we come out here for to do today. And where we at now? We all adopt Plan Six, well, we, we hadn't heard nothing from you all, understand what y'all want to do? The community already had met their statement. Community already understand where they want to be at. I mean, look, look at how y'all sitting there. You sitting like you ain't worried about nothing. And I mean, we ain't playing. I mean, lawsuits, I mean, we used to lawsuit. How you think we got where we at now? You don't bother, they would've gotten paid the end of that, had it been a lawsuit. And we going to sit here and say, "Oh," why don't y'all adopt Plan Six today? Yeah. You wasting any time, my time, everybody's time. I mean, y'all going to meet regularly, everybody meet. So I mean, if you going to do so, why don't adopt Plan? What was wrong with Plan Six? Say, y'all hadn't told us nothing, don't seem like you want to tell us nothing. We ain't playing it like y'all ain't playing.
My name is Ms. Margaret, and I'm just a citizen of Tallahassee County. And I agree with the husband, I'm sitting there watching the supervisor that was on the platform, and nobody seemed concerned about anything. But we are the people of Tallahassee County. We are the government. You all are to serve us. We elected you, and we expect some support by our side.
The Board of Supervisors want to say something.
I want to make the proposal today. I want to make the motion to adopt the plan that the demographers planned up for us, that was printed in the paper, and I want to make the motion to adopt that plan now.
What plan is that, excuse me, what plan?
The plan that the demographers, Rigby, Holliday, and Derrick Johnson do.
No, not you, because it's concerning.
I've looked at all these plans, I've studied them, I took them into consideration, and that's my motion on the floor right now.
Yeah, that's the, is that, that's the June 21st?
Yes.
Mr., wait, wait, we got a motion on the floor.
You authorized the submission of...
I'm going to second that motion.
I want to, I want to, I got, we got two letters here from...
And I've took both plans, and I've looked at both plans, just like I said that I would. And, and, I'm, I'm just one minute. And we got a letter here from Holliday and Rigby, and Derrick Johnson. Our plan, we have to move, we got two sub precincts in our plan, okay? Plan Six that y'all submitted, we'd have to have six sub precincts enabled to, to adopt your plan. It'd have to be six sub precincts in that plan.
Was that a crap here to draw these plans?
Well, I'm thinking about county money and the confusion of the people too. You got 758 people that you'll have to change up and make them vote in a different precinct, a sub precinct, with Plan Six. And plan, and our plan...
But who's idea, who wanted to draw it, and it wasn't a crap here to draw it?
This is your, this is your plan.
Or this our plan?
That's your plan, yeah. The plan that the Tallahassee Redistricting Committee came up with, it had to have six sub precincts. And that's, that's more voting houses, that's 758 people that's got to be changed around and try to find new places to vote. And that's my, that's why I'm seconding his motion.
Okay, now, let me, put it out, put it out. This is the same thing that you said a few moments ago, Mr. Low. Mike was going to explain our plan, with these people that haven't seen a plan, period, they don't know anything about it, and this is my understanding that you was going to allow Mike to explain Plan Six. And what Mr. Reaver was saying a few moments ago, and what he said in his public hearing, he done some things that wasn't even a crap here to the plan. My understanding was today to discuss the two plans and come up with a plan, or work with the community and come up with a plan. But right now, I see, Mr. Little, I can understand you and Bobby, and from what's going on now, you all don't know what's going on. Because he made the motion, and he himself. So action.
And I told you to read it myself.
Yeah, I'm standing, you told me. I understand, you all don't know what's going on. They ready to adopt this plan here now, the plan that we have already voted against, and I told y'all in public that we don't, and it's on tape, that we don't want that plan for the guy who like votes. Settling that plan, but both courthouses, we beat two. Okay, you got to come up with a precinct, and it's got to be approved by Justice Department before you can come up with a precinct. Then order the community housing, well, there's another precinct that you got to create. When you speaking about spending some more money, you spending money down, you know. So, Mr. Kemp?
Now, we've been talking, we've been fair, oh, yeah, but I know, for the record, Jerome Kemp, currently in WACP.
We got a copy of those letters too, the Redistricting Committee, I'll have, do you have one?
We request, first, I want to address that, first, it's something that come from Rigby and Johnson. It should have been sent properly to the Redistricting Committee, that was part of the agreement when we first started this thing. So now you're coming, wait a minute, let me, let me address this gentleman here, B32 Val. Should you turn the voice on to something other? Now, I understand that we going to try to work fairly this community. We've been trying to be fair with y'all all the time. We have come and discussed our plan, before our time from the board, we put the very first two plans. Nobody said one thing. You brought plan, your plan, finally, we looked at it, we discussed it, nobody from y'all said nothing. How do, I'm, how can y'all, justly, y'all, justly sit there and say you had to vote for a plan, and you have never said nothing about no plan?
Jerome, you said, you hadn't said anything about the first two plans?
You, okay, yeah, you did. You, what did you say? You said that I...
I said the people in Spring Hill Community and the people in Sumner, two different sets of people, they don't have any community interest, and we...
My God, my God!
Putting them all in one beat.
Excuse me?
And they all came back and changed.
For twenty, for twenty-something years, when we began with Redistricting, I lived in Charleston, I've been associating with voting people from Wilf, Sumner, I have nothing with them too. But we are all people. Now, I can hear where we going, we got to draw the lines equally.
Well, what I said, what you said is that, that we didn't have to say anything about? I did, I came to you, and I talked to Mr. Sayer that day, and I said that I thought that would never work, and it, and I've had several responses.
But when have we discussed, when have y'all, when have we really sit down like this? Community, and try to discuss our plan, as opposed to somebody just saying, "I'm ready to make a motion now." And, 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 and all fairness, look at my courtroom, but look, look at y'all. If the motion is carried, if it's, if you, if the motion go through, you go through it, how you think it's going to come out? Look at yourself, stubble, look at yourself. I hope that motion, I hope, I hope you do think seriously, because what Representative said, what Governor said, you know we lost money? You know you're going to lose more money? You know we going to fight it to the, to the hill if you adopt a plan that's not fair, and what's fair about a plan does not give us the chance to elect people of our choice? We are a majority, not a minority. You understand that? We are 65% for native politics in this county. Why should we not have a chance to elect somebody that's going to represent us? Now, you can vote how you want to vote, but you know in your heart, it's right to us to give us a chance to elect people of our choice.
In addition, earlier, and I talked to, uh, you know, Marvin Dawes, and I also talked to Tom Reddick, also the board note, anything that dealing with redistricting, please send me a copy of it. My understanding is that there's been some letter written, and he just read it, from Rigby, that I didn't get any of it. We don't know nothing. And again, just like Mr. Low was saying, or Mr. Kemp was saying a few moments ago, you can just look at the board right now, and we see which way it's going. It's going to be 3-2, that's going to be your vote. That's going to be your vote right here now. Mr. Little and Mr. Bank is just as blind as one, two, three, as blind as we are. We don't know what's going on there.
Mike Sayer from Greenville with the Tallahassee County Redistricting Committee. As I understand what you're saying, the reason why you're proposing support for the plan that was done by Rigby on behalf of the Board of Supervisors has to do with the number of sub precincts that would have to be created as a result of the plan done by the community, which is called Plan Number Six, correct?
My fault.
Okay, so...
Plus, your Senate minds, you know, we went over with the last... I mean, that's not, I mean, but everything is in, you know, your Senate minds also, and another reason, I mean, that's one of my main reasons too, is, you know, I'm losing 364 people now, as it is. I mean, all the people at Mount Olive Way, ToluTobi Way, I'm losing all those people. And then with your plan too, you coming in to the city of Charleston and taking a lot of my folks there too. I mean, I'm, I'm losing all Charleston voters, just about, I mean, it's coming out of my district, I mean, I'm just, I'm losing a lot of people, and I'm, I don't want to lose all the folks. I mean, this plan, I've studied, and this plan makes more sense, it's going our way.
So, those are the three reasons, right?
Yeah, yeah, the demographers.
No, you can't, you can't, you're the only...
I understand that, I'm here, I got, I got you. Now, number one, wait a minute, come on now. Number one, Rigby, when he drew his plan, made it clear at the public hearing...
And Johnson, they both drew.
Bro, this, this is my statement now. Right, but this is my statement now, okay? Right, Rigby, when he drew the plan for the county, okay? He, he stated that when he drew that plan, this is how he testified, you can look at it in the transcript, he said that he did not take into account any considerations that we had raised... at any of the public meetings or public hearings, nor had he taken into consideration any of the issues we had raised by virtue of the first two plans that we had drawn. That's one. Number two, when he raised this issue about senate district lines or house district lines, he had to concede, and the board has to concede, that it is not one of the four criteria which the board adopted as a basis for understanding what was needed to draw this plan. There's no dispute about that. Even more importantly, even more importantly, at the public hearing, at the public hearing, Rigby had to concede that the plan he drew was almost impossible to understand in terms of the visibility of the senate lines, which he said he took into consideration as a basis for drawing the plan. And it would be very difficult for any, for anyone other than an expert demographer familiar with all the data he personally looked at to even understand how his plan was drawn in relation to those districts. It made it very difficult for anyone in the community to take into account any consideration that he had made there. And that consideration was not an authorized criterion that was adopted by the board, it never been mentioned in our discussions. However you may attempt to interpret it now, it's never even discussed, it was never on the table. Now, at this last public hearing, we raised some serious concerns about the demographer's plan that had to do with how other members of the board saw the impact of that plan on their districts. In particular, both Mr. Little and Mr. Banks raised those questions as part of the public hearing. If you go forward now and say, "I like this plan 'cause it does for me what I want", and that's the only issue, you're saying you're prepared to disregard the publicly stated concerns that other members of the board had and that the community had, and put on the table. And say, "Well, if I can get the three votes, that's all that I'm concerned about. I don't have to take into consideration all of these other concerns which are as important to other people as yours are to you." I haven't said your concerns aren't important to you or shouldn't be. But if we're gonna talk about fairness, if we're gonna talk about balance, if we're gonna talk about a process which vindicates a democratic way of doing things, and this is the largest turnout we've had probably, or certainly similar to the turnout we had in some of them last time at the public hearing. And all of these things just get wiped out and are disregarded? Or, do we have the option, shouldn't we adopt, shouldn't we take the option? If you're not prepared to see Plan Six as adequately addressing your concerns, to do what we have called for from the outset, which is to get us around the table and look at these plans together and say, "We can make this adjustment here, can you live with that? You make this adjustment here, can you live with that?" And find a way to address each of these concerns, not perfectly, 'cause it's gonna be hard to make them perfect for each, 'cause at some point there are- Cut it off. At some point, there are choices which are, you know, just require, you're gonna have to make, everybody's gonna have to make some compromises. We've offered to do that from the beginning, and we demonstrated our good faith, as you reiterated here today. We demonstrated our good faith when we heard your concerns about our first two plans. And we came back with our third plan, which we call Plan Number Six, that's the number one. Our third plan, it took into account as best as we could, all of what we heard from the supervisors. And we drew a plan that was fairly similar, but significantly different from the plan drawn by the demographer. To this day, we have not had the opportunity to have this kind of negotiation, discussion about how we could bring everybody's concerns onto the table, into focus, and result in a plan. We were hoping that if possible, if there were still serious differences, we could do that today. But of course, if your demographers aren't here, that's gonna be very difficult to do. Our demographers are here, but the boards are not, that's unfortunate. Because if there was an issue of sub precincts, the likelihood is that some adjustments could be made to address those concerns, which wouldn't materially alter our plan and wouldn't undo your desires. But you can't do that unless you come to the table in good faith with community and say, "What about this? What about that? What about this? What about that?" That takes a lot shorter time than the kind of fight that takes place after a plan is adopted, and that can go on for a long, long time, and nobody wants that. We want a plan that we can all live with, and that represents the best in the democratic process, which is to vindicate this participation by hearing it and taking it into account in making these decisions. Negotiations are not foreign to Tallahassee County, it's what we did last time, and almost got us a plan, unfortunately, we don't have to reiterate what happened next after that. The supervisors walked away from the plan they, they negotiated and adopted. That was their choice, and that's why we had such a hassle afterwards. But that's doable, if you wanna do it. If you don't wanna do it, and you don't wanna take anything into concern, I guess you don't have to. That's a tragedy, when you talk about building community. That's Little.
I'll go ahead. Which was Chairman, uh, Susan, my name is Bob, my name's a supervisor, this is for Tallahassee County. And which I will more or less, uh, discuss my, uh, ideas, and, uh, which I respect my colleagues', you know, ideas. But this is something I think, uh, all of us should take, uh, serious. And that is, it's like this, we growed up a plan, community brought up two plans. Now, I was one that, that had some problem with the first two plans. But the second, the third plan that the, that the community come back with, I could live with that plan. And I, and I'm hoping my colleagues can, um, can look at this Plan Six and, uh, like Mike was saying just a few minutes ago, which I thought that this is what we was gonna do, is come back and, uh, and we talk about what, what we like and what we don't like. And feel that we could adjust some things in both plans. And make it be where the community have some input, and also the board supervisor has some input. And, 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 you know, what I'm saying like this, this is the democracy system, I think everybody's supposed to have a fair share. And all I'm asking is my colleagues to reconsider their motion and second. That we sit down at the table like, uh, I was a decent people. Let the community have a voice and, and say what they want. And I'm knowing our time, there comes a time when we gotta agree on something. And, and what I'm saying is, we, we come down to agreeing on a good plan that everybody can live with. Now, everybody might not agree, but the majority will agree. And that's all I'm asking us to do this evening is, is to, is to sit down and negotiate this plan, plan, the county plan and Plan Six. And let us go and try to adopt the plan. Because see, what I'm saying is, I was sitting on this board in nineteen ninety-four with Kane, that the Tallahassee County Board Supervisor, well, well, when we paid money out to lawyers, and also we paid money to the redistricting lawyer. And I didn't think it was right, I didn't then, and I don't now. That the county paid money and paid it out to lawyers, and then some of those jurors come up and draw a plan that we still got to run. Now, what I'm saying is, I don't think the system of Tallahassee County need to be put through that. I think we, y'all sit us up here as good, couple of people that are growing up a good plan, are making good decisions, especially, uh, uh, for this county. And I think this is one time we need to make one. And we don't need to come here talking about, uh, community don't have no interest in. I think we need to go back to the growing board, let the community have a voice. Ever how many wanted to come in, and the board supervisor sat down, let's draw up the plan.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to be able to- Ask Mr. Reddick a question, and, uh, give him a chance to respond to the question if it's, all right, or if it's not out of context.
Excuse me, what you saying?
I would like to be able to ask your attorney a question and give him a chance to respond to the question if it's not out of context, because, uh, to, uh, legal point that he made, uh, when they was adopting the criteria. Now, he said right there, and explained to the board supervisor that once you adopt this criteria, that you wouldn't be able to get around that criteria, so I would like to ask him. Is now the criteria that's at the door, are, are they still going by the criteria?
Can I ask?
Yeah.
Uh, let me, let me, uh, might I see the newspaper with the criteria? The criteria were fourfold. Uh, the criteria were, a district should be composed of contiguous territories. And the, uh, uh, and I don't make value judgments on the plans that's submitted, that's not my responsibility. But I'll, if you don't mind, I'd like to compare and contrast the two better of both. If that's all right. But I'll, I'll ask about, about this specific, uh, about this specific criterion that was asked for. The first one was the cores of contiguous, that the, that the, uh, districts be contiguous. That is a requirement of law. And, uh, under, uh, the plan that the motion was made on and that was advertised for the public hearing, the districts are contiguous. And if you don't mind me saying so, the districts under, I believe the other plan, the, uh, the Plan Six, the alternative plan, I believe it was submitted at the public hearing, I believe that's contiguous as well. Now, the, let me finish.
Wait a minute, you, you still not answer my question.
No, no, I, I, I want, I want to answer your question by answering it, and let me do that, I mean, going through each point. Number two was that the population of each district should be relatively equal in size and not exceed ten percent deviation. That's criteria two.
Right.
Under this, uh, plan, under, under these plans, uh, the population, the population, uh, is less than ten percent under the plan that the motion is made on, under the June twenty-first plan, it is less than ten percent deviation, it is, uh, less than six percent deviation. And then, under the Plan Six, it is a less than six percent deviation as well. So, that's criteria two, and I'm answering each one as you ask. And number three was, the redistricting plan should comply with all the federal state laws and federal laws, including sections two and five of the Voting Rights Act of the United States Constitution. The la- the benchmark plan was, was devised by the, uh, in large part by Federal District Court action. The benchmark plan, uh, that we have, first of all, the population of Tallahassee County, Mississippi, the voting age population in nineteen ninety was fifty-two point one-five percent, uh, black. Uh, and, uh, fifty-two point one-five percent black. In nineteen, in two thousand though, it was fifty-four point three-four percent black voting age population. Uh, it, the benchmark plan that you would consider would be the, uh, fifty, uh, I think you would, you look, what was done in, in the public notice in the paper on this plan, was that the, uh, the existing supervisor districts, as they are right now, under the population that was existing at the two thousand census was explored. Now, this is what the population revealed. You got to, section five requires, of course, the plan was drawn basically by federal court, uh, but you have to not retrogress, certainly, under section five of the Voting Rights Act. And section two, uh, is, uh, the federal court, uh, basically drew the plan. Uh, but section five requires no retrogression of, of minority voting strength. Under the, under this plan, uh, as it is, the black voting, under the existing supervisor district, in District One, the black voting age population was thirty-three point seven-two. Uh, under District Two, it was sixty point eight-five. That is a district with a black majority voting age population. Under District Three, it was thirty-four point nine-three. Under District Four, it was seventy-two point six-five percent black voting age. Under District Five, it was seventy-eight point three-four percent black voting age. Under the June twenty-first plan, the proposed districts, however, are as follows. District One, which was a, not a black majority district, the black voting age population went down to thirty-one point four-five. Uh, but District Two, which is a black voting age majority district, under the benchmark plan, the, it was sixty point eight-five percent. Under the plan as advertised, it was sixty point eight-eight percent, which is a progression and not a retrogression, uh, as far as the, uh, numbers on that district. District Three, the black voting age population went from thirty-four point nine-three to thirty-two point five, uh, three. In District Four, uh, the black voting age population, uh, went from seventy-two point six-six to seventy-two point seven-four, which is a slight progression. And in District Five, it went from seventy-eight point three-four to seventy-nine point, uh, seven-eight, which is a slight progression. So, the three, uh, black majority districts, as compared and contrasted with the benchmark plan, the two thousand census plan, uh, under this plan, are, uh, that was advertised, the June twenty-first plan, there is no, uh, retrogression of black voting strength, so you have, uh, the, the item three. And also, if I might say, under the, uh, plan that was presented as number six, in each of those three districts likewise, uh, save for District Four, you do have a reduction in District Four in the black, uh, let's see, in the, well, let's see, District, uh, let me, let me, let me check on that. You do have, uh, uh, not a significant, uh, you would not have any significant, uh, uh, retrogression. I don't believe that would constitute a retrogression in Plan Six. It should not be a retrogression either.
Phil?
And, and let's go to the last criteria, please sir. Criteria number four, the cores of existing districts will be attempted to be preserved where compatible with the foregoing criteria. Compared and contrasted, there again, whichever one they adopt, you know, or, or whatever they do, is not my decision. Compared and contrasted about preserving the cores, we've been through the other three criteria. Compared and contrasted between the two, there are fewer, uh, people changed from district to district under the, uh, plan that was advertised than under Plan Six. But of course, under both, it has to be some changes made to get your population, uh, under ten percent deviation. So, both had to have some changes, and, but, uh, you know, if you wanna talk about the cores of existing districts, uh, you know, you can look at the numbers as to, you know, which plan moved more people and which plan moved less and, and all. And then you get into the split precincts. and which plan moved less and, and all, and then you get into the split precincts.
If you would, you would agree that that criterion didn't say move the least number of people. It simply, wait a minute, it simply said preserve the core of the district. And that both plans have done that. And after that, it becomes extremely subjective of how you, how you now elect to interpret the word core. Because there is no exact or even semi-precise standard for that. And both plans accomplish that. And if you add on other ways of describing that, you're actually changing the criterion that was adopted by the board and adding new information that was not in the standard.
Now, I'm not saying, let me, first, let me say that I'm not saying that the Plan Six complies with the current state of federal law, you know, that because you've got some other requirements that you have. A survey would have to be made, uh, in regard to that. There are some criterion that have to be looked at in regard to several cases that are, uh, but solely on the issue of representation was what I opine there. And as far as the cores of districts, uh, one can look at the cores of districts on the basis if, as one, uh... The core of a district is what the district consists of and, uh, and where the majority of the, uh, the population is. And if you look at, uh, well, I mean, different people might, might express it in different ways. But as far as preserving the cores of existing districts...
A core is a core, it's not the entire district.
A core is a core, and it is impossible, as it's been explained, to preserve in any plan that you do where you've got to get population equity to, uh, have exactly the same configuration as you did before. The core would be, uh, to, uh, have, uh, the basic core or of the district preserved. And that can be judged on the, uh, the shape of the, uh, and content, not only shape, but contents of the plan as well. But as, as to the criterion in particular, uh, that is how I would address that.
Uh, Tom, you still just not answer the question. Uh, according to what they adopted, uh, and they voted to, the two supervisors there voted to adopt this plan, you all have not listened to anything that the public said. What was the purpose of having a public hearing? You sit here with a map that was ran in the paper. Not one single person asked you all to adopt that map at the public hearings that I went to and I came to vote on. Everybody asked you all to adopt the, uh, map number six, Plan Number Six that we had done. Everybody in the public hearing, the ones that had some problem, uh, uh, with our plan, they never said that, uh, it shouldn't be adopted. So, I, I don't see any sense in, in having a public hearing if you're gonna throw out everything that you came to the public hearing for, when the people that come asked you specifically not to adopt, uh, the plan that, uh, Rigby had done. Now, uh, this, for, for example, you all come here and consider a criteria that we just knew about. Uh, and, you know, I, I don't, I don't see how you can do that if you're having a public hearing and then you come here and, 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 uh, Rigby sent this in like he was in a rush. Just sent it in, just did the letter on the fifth and just sent it in today. He must, he faxed this to you all, didn't even have time to get it in the mail and get it to you. Just faxed it to you. At the public hearing on Saturday, July 13th, 2002, I'm just reading, uh, what it said because none of the redistricting committee don't know what's going on with this. At the public hearing on Saturday, July 13th, 2002, the Tallahatchie County Board of Supervisors received a proposed supervisor redistricting plan for Tallahatchie County Redistricting Committee. This plan will be referred to here and after as Plan Number Six. In accordance with the wishes of the boards and supervisors and being mindful of the criteria adopted by the board to govern the process of redistricting in Tallahatchie County, Mr. Johnson and I have evaluated this Plan Number Six and have these comments. All five Board of Supervisors districts in Plan Six are contiguous. So, that was one of the criteria is saying that they were contiguous. Okay, Plan Six complies with the one man, one vote requirement with all variance of five point, uh, with all ver, with overall variance of 5.50%, which is well below the 10% allowable. Plan Six avoid retrogression and complies with all state law. Plan Six has moved census blocks to create no less than six, uh, sub precincts distributed throughout the county and result in 758 persons affected by each split precinct. Please refer to attachment, Split Precinct, Tallahatchie County Redistricting Committee, Plan Number Six. These sub precincts cause voters confusion and more work for election commission members to make sure that the voters are registered in their correct precinct and vote on a, on the correct ballot. There is also extra expense of additional poll workers. Mr. Rigby nor Mr. Johnson has no authority to be down here in Tallahatchie County or set a budget for the Board of Supervisors and set a budget for the Board of Election Commission. It's the election commissioner's job to put those people where they need to be voting. If they can't do their job, they need to get down. It's just that something. Now, there are also extra expense for additional poll workers, different ballots for each sub precinct. And all, and, and it seem like that, uh, Mr. Rigby and Johnson, uh, who's ever, that the only criteria that they could find and the only thing that they could find that was wrong with the public map was the fact of the sub precinct, which was not one of the original criterias in the first place. And I, I, I think that the Board of Supervisors should start out by trying to be more fair. In a, in accordance with the, so, everything that he did was in accordance with the wishes of the Board of Supervisors. He did go back and check that. And then even after your old man came back and told you that there was nothing wrong, that it met all state laws and everything, and then you all still just ignored that the public that came to the meeting, they requested that you all, uh, uh, adopt Plan Number Six. Nobody, uh, objected to Plan Number Six, nobody kicked against Plan Number Six. And then you all just on your own. Uh, who, whose advice were you all following? What was the purpose of the public hearing? And I, I would like to get an answer from, from the boards and supervisors on this because it's very important if we have a public hearing and we shows up to express our concern and then you all come back and vote, uh, uh, quite to the contrary of this. Uh, in the public hearing, who told you all that, that they was not satisfied with, uh, uh, Plan Number Six? Uh, who told you all that they would, uh, want you to vote, uh, vote for the plan that was advertised in the newspaper? See, that plan, and you all did that in, in a kind of conspicuous way. And I'm, I'm gonna tell you that now. That was done because the redistricting committee has came to you all and asked you all every time. And I won't be through in just a second, I'm getting a little old and it's hard for me to see small writing. Next time would you all ask Mr. Rigby to fax you something a little bit bigger. Uh, every time that, that, uh, we have came to you and asked you all to let us know what's going on and let us know what's being considered in these things and let the redistricting committee know. Every step of the way with redistricting, you all have, have jumped up and done different things. Even we came and asked you all about a plan, made it our business, come to the meeting, and you all said it was no such plan. Then all of a sudden, we found out that you do have a plan. Now, here we come in, in the mysterious letter that showed up on August the fifth, the day that you supposed to meet with, uh, uh, the redistricting committee and the public. And now you got a letter from Rigby stating that, uh, it's too many sub precincts. I'm talking about, uh, uh, it costs us money to be studied out here trying to redistrict this county and you all act like you don't care. You all are being paid for sitting there, $28,000 a year for two meetings a month. I'm not being paid for sitting here and doing this. So, uh, hopefully, in the near future, and, and, uh, I don't, I don't want it to seem like that, uh, we are begging the Board of Supervisors because personally, and I, I thought that it weren't gonna work anyway, I, I've been through too many redistricting. And I know redistricting, you make a lot of enemies in them, and, uh, people are not gonna go along with, uh, uh, these redistricting. You're gonna have to force people, it's go, you're gonna have to go to court. I've never seen a redistricting where the people didn't have to go to court.
Okay, uh, Mr. Kelly, let me go try to...
I'm, simple gentleman, I, I'm, I'm, I can't say I'm not surprised. Um, back in my heart, I thought this would happen, this would, would, would about to happen. But before you all take that little vote or whatever you're gonna do, look around you. Y'all look around you. They spoke, these people, everybody have spoke to you. I haven't seen nobody in opposition to, no plan will be presented. No citizen in Tallahatchie County have stood up and said, "I do not like, not Plan One, not Plan Two, not Plan Six, not a one." You all have been pushing this, this proposal plan. This man said, "Only because I got a letter this morning," said something about sub district. If I was turning and asked these good citizens, what is a sub district? I would bet you very few of the kids what a sub district is. But I would bet you every last one can tell you why each one of the total cases. You ask them folks in Way of Fire, that used to be, and it used to be in Way of Fire, they've been voting at the, that library, is it library?
Community Center.
Ever since I've been going to, wait, they got to find a new place. Now, it's hard for me to tell me those, those citizens that's been going there for all those years, tell them now you gotta find something. It's hard for them to not understand that why is our courthouse now put in district two? See, Rigby and Johnson don't live here and they, they refer to it as the wishes of the Board of Supervisors. Now, if you got a letter today, faxing him the day, written yesterday, I mean, the day, in fact, the day, when did y'all send y'all wishes down there that you want him to really examine, uh, explore, dissect of what you did to Plan Six? He said, "But it's not my wrong, didn't bring it to say, did that what he said?" It's y'all wishing. So, people, this is our wishes. And I'm talking directly to my supervisor, district two. My wish is that you reject the proposed plan and accept Plan Six. Now, I have no more comment.
I'm talking to my supervisor, B five, yes. It seems to me, I don't see no white people in y'all, that's it. It seem like to me, the supervisor and bro, them y'all ain't got the word, it's three of us and we gonna vote. So, now, why we, this ain't right. Well, I don't think y'all fit fingers fast.
You would go out and you would be fast to everybody. And yet a day you telling me that you gonna suddenly put me in a pack of box and any one man ain't gonna get him, no, no. I don't appreciate it. I reject your plan.
I wanna tell them I, uh, reject his, his, uh, plan too. Because I went to him and asked him to come look at the condition where I live. He told me he be there the next morning, he haven't got there yet. That morning they come yet, that been over a year ago. Water was running in my house then, when I went to him. And I asked him to come look at it, he wasn't even sure. And then, then gonna come around and if he pull some kind of trick like that, I reject, reject it.
Moved back home, I was born in Tallahatchie County.
All right.
And I believe in Tallahatchie County. I have never seen nothing like this out of my years living here. I moved to San Francisco after forty-five years in San Francisco. I went for Pacific Gas and Electric Company. And the congressman vote made me, uh, sub phone. And I was only black working for that company. And he said, "Will, he said, "I know you, he said, "I'm gonna make you..." The sub phoned, he said, "But you got to go to school." I said, "Mr. Clark, I said, "I'm the only black down there, you got eighteen Caucasian." He said, "You gonna be over there one of them, 'cause you gonna treat them fairly." And I know you gonna treat them fairly. So, he put me over the eighteen Caucasian under me, 'cause I believe in treating people like I like to be treated. You gonna treat people, you better kind of wait. It take God a little while, but pretty soon, God gonna wait with you. You gonna wonder what happened, you gonna wonder what happened to you. Now, uh, it's uncalled for us to sit down here going through all this here every year. And yeah, I've been back here nine, ten, ten years. Everybody been asking me to run for supervisor. But where the system set up, you don't give a two. So, uh, they said, but all I can say to my two supervisor, regardless what go down, when something is fair and you know it for the people, you, you two both stay together. I mean, sometimes y'all, one of you both went the other way, you shouldn't never went the other way. I'm gonna tell you just like it here. In the Caucasian side, you will have to open your heart up and treat people like you would like to be treated. Put yourself in, and then the people, she was like, "Yeah, that's all." That's all you got to do. Everybody wanna be treated fairly. See, one of your supervisor, a lot of y'all know me, uh, he come to me, I went from dough to dough. Campaign in front, there you go. He can tell you. I went to dough to dough. And the people so much, "Well, I'm gonna vote for him, Will." I said, "I believe he gonna do you fairly." He told me he gonna do this. He, "Y'all ain't never had no black top everywhere, your house come right off there." I said, "I believe he, I believe he gonna do it." But now, I've been two years ago, I'm gonna have to tell you just like this, I ain't seen no black top there yet. Yeah, I, I really thought you were all you can. Supervisor can only do so much, the legislature trying to put some, but if all of them get together, the legislature's gonna back. And, uh, I'm back home in the state. I'm gonna tell you, I'm here in the state, but people gonna treat me like I'm a human being. And we gonna do it legally. If we had to go to court, we gonna fight. And I know a lot of people in high power. See, just like a lot of people, I got to say this, a lot of people around here, right today, yeah, hey, now, President. You got the best president that you ever had in Washington, DC right now. A lot of people, a lot, a lot, I'm just saying, a lot of people, a lot of people just hate me. Bush can't do his job, but these people mind hate people. He trying to do his job and, uh, forget it, see, the people just, just hate him because of what he does. And I, I've been doing that all my life, let me say, I've been doing that all my life. I have only voted for Republicans twice in my life. I voted for Eisenhower and I voted for Bush. And I'm not ashamed to tell you, I voted for, because Bush is on the law side. When you're on the law side, you can't go wrong.
I speak to all five of you supervisors, it's how all five, it takes all five of you guys to run this county. And it takes all five of you guys to recognize that. Tallahatchie County is about the poorest productive county in the space with all of this national resources that's in and out of this tent. So, now, I'm telling you guys, because you don't seem, three of you guys don't seem to realize that you accountable to the people. And the percentage of the voting age population is what got you elected in the first place. Let me tell you something. Let me tell you something. This is 2002, 2002. I am almost 52 years old. I am not embarrassed, I hate to have to say that we acting like it's 1945. We act like all the movements, all of the important things that affects human needs just hadn't happened. Y'all gotta wake up. You've simply got to wake up. People are human beings, every one of us are human beings. And until you start respecting what you set up as the laws and the rules, I mean, who are you? What, what, what's wrong with you? You set up criteria, you make rules, and then you go change them arbitrarily to fit your personal interests. We bring y'all here to be no personal, nothing. We bring y'all here to be no personal nothing. Y'all representing people. The county's people.
I would, I would like to take us back to what Mr. Banks said. I don't know whether he was putting it in the form of a substitute motion, which if seconded, then would be voted on before the motion that's on the floor. I don't know if that's what you were doing, but you might have been.
I must tell you, I will put it into a motion that Tallahassee County Board should, would, would go back to the growing board with the community. And we grow up a plan that everybody believe that I make a motion that we believe in.
I second that motion.
Because I, you see, I, I think that that would address the concern. See, the question I have is who authorized Rigby to write that motion? I'm sorry, go ahead.
We gonna do it with post?
Absolutely, I'm sorry, I shut up.
We write a motion, have a supplemental motion. Uh, motion and a second. Now, do we have any question to the motion?
Yes.
My, my motion is a supplemental motion supersedes the motion that was on the table. And that we adopt to, we go back to the table and...
Were you adopting a substitute?
Uh, we, uh, make a motion that is a supplement to the motion that we, as the board of supervisors and the redistricting committee, go back and work on Plan Six, and also the county's plan. And grow up a plan that we can adopt and send to the justice department. That's what I say.
Let's chat.
See, my, my question is who asked Rigby to do what they did in assessing the sub precincts? Because, I mean, I doubt that the board actually voted on that. It would have been possible to ask Rigby to take, if you were concerned about the sub precincts question, instead of making a value judgment about good and bad, right and wrong, to say, "This is the way you could adjust Plan Six," if he was concerned about it, "to address those sub precinct questions." With these minor changes, these two plans would basically be about at the same place, if that was an issue. Now, that comes from a different spirit about what it is you're trying to accomplish in terms of listening to community, rather than Rigby, the demographer, as Mr. Meeks was trying to point out, was really inserting himself into the politics and making judgments about what the considerations ought to be in assessing the value of the plans. And so, I, I would support Mr. Banks' substitute motion that we sit down at the table and figure out how to address each of the concerns, which probably would not require major adjustments, but which means that the final plan would also take into account the concerns that we put on the table, which at this point have been completely rejected by the demographers in that they did not consider them at all in drawing the plan. None of the concerns we raised at the public hearing were addressed. Why did they address the sub precinct question? Was there an agenda, specific agenda? It would appear so. That's not fair to us. So, we ought to go back to the table together and solve this problem.
Question, before question.
Look, I would like to add to that. You can look at both planes and see that you ain't that far off. Now, I don't see for we need to adopt a plan when the community didn't have input in the plan that we brought. I think we can work this out. And that's all I'm saying. It, it, and save some money on the end there. You know, I don't, I don't, I don't think I added too much.
Questions on the motion? I'm gonna make my statement now. At the public hearing, at the public hearing in Sumner, I rejected this county plan. Still rejecting the county plan. I think it's unfair. It's unfair to me as a supervisor of District Five. It's unfair to the citizens of District Five, and it's unfair to the people of Tallahassee County. That was also, I'm gonna make a record now, so it be, we don't have a court report here now. I feel that there was some underhand stuff went on. And I'm, I'm gonna just be telling the truth about it. That we weren't, my, like they been saying, me, Bobby wasn't all in the mix of this. We should have been, that was a plan, a kind of plan, and the community come and met with us. And they wouldn't let, you all wouldn't let know everything that went on, 'cause we didn't know everything that went on with the plan. We didn't. And then, when they come to, when I see the county plan, when I see the county plan, it had took, I understood, they were proposing to take, before I see the plan, taking the code out of it. But when I got to see the plan to see, that took out the way of community ties in Way. And I didn't know nothing about it, till I see the plan on the day of the public hearing. And I done been to redistricting twice, 1983 and 1991. And other time then, we couldn't most know what was going on. This time, we both been done, a little bit things been done, failure. And it wasn't done even on the, oh, we sitting on the board, and stuff was running around our head. And now, and I got to agree. And I've told this, my colleagues know. I've told them. And I've told our attorney. I'm not gonna be a part of anything hanky panky. I don't sit on the other side of the table. I sat on the other side of the table twelve years ago. And thought we was doing things fair and just. And ended up coming back one morning, then, and I understand that way, 'cause I'm doing the same thing my colleagues doing. They listening to the people that already done told them what to do. Just like y'all done told us. And I'm gonna listen to what you said. I'm gonna reject the plan. And if I have to pay my own money, whoever, if they setting on up there, whoever be signed to this plan in DC, I'm going to talk to them. I'm going to DC myself. It's unfair. It's unfair and unjust. To my people in B-5 and courthouse that voted in Sumner, they have to go anywhere else to vote. I don't give a care about the senator and the representative. It didn't affect my representative. So, I don't care about whoever representative come in. I don't care about whoever the senator that's gonna be on the redistricting. They didn't consider me. And they didn't consider my people. So, why should I consider them? But I'm asking my state representative, and my state representative from Charleston, and my two state representatives, go back down there and give us the money to take care of these B-boots. These extra boots. Because they want to play the hard part. I ain't create the problem. My people in my district did not create the problem. So, they have to give us the money to pay for the actual workers. And the actual material to run the, the nation. Same thing in Way. What I supposed to do? The people in Armyo. The people down Way of B-5. And the people down in Goose Park and Blue Lake and Rainbow. What they supposed to do? Why they gonna vote there? They got to be changed. Well, I think it's conspiracy against me. They trying to get me beat. So, wherever, if it be voted to be set up there, I'm gonna work harder than I ever worked before to kill it. If I have to go to Mr. Win at the bush, then we gonna find out what kind of man he is. I want you to call him and tell him, tell Ospro, just gonna kill him, to reject it, because it's unfair. I don't see no reason. We wasn't the way we was in 1991. Well, we cannot sit down at the table. George Peters, not George Peters, what he did. Ray Hardy. Uh, Mr. Bushhalter. And, and, uh, Mr. Tally. No, no, and, um, even back in eighty-three, with Mr. Savage here. They didn't have, they didn't talk, but they did have the mob to sit down at the table. And so, to negotiate, and that's all I wanna do. And I'm asking my Tally, I wanna sit down and negotiate with you all, the community. We don't agree, and neither one gonna come up with a plan that's all us can live with. I mean, we don't say everything that we want. But to me, you don't tell, you don't challenge me. Yesterday...
No, no, man. They ain't do that.
They challenge me. They wanna move me. So, I'm gonna close with this. So, when they move the motion, I'm gonna ride the roads of DC, and I know the way there, to make sure that if that plan go up there, long as I'm the supervisor or not supervisor, I'm intended to try to kill it. We have a motion on the floor. We're gonna move the motion. We have a supplemental motion. We're gonna ask the attorney to read it, and we're gonna vote on it.
You want me to read it for me to read it?
Yes, sir.
I think that the motion, I'm trying to get the spirit of it, would be to reject...
And let's hear it. People don't hear you back there, meaning...
The, uh...
Please talk.
The motion, as I understand it, would be a substitute, in the form of a substitute motion to the motion to adopt the June 21st plan. This plan would, this motion would call for the rejection of the June 21st plan, and would then call for, would, that the board of supervisors and the redistricting committee would then consider the Plan Six together with the county plan that had been, with the June 21st county plan and Plan Six.
Let's look at the motion. Is that, did you, did you certify that motion? Read, Mr. Banks.
So, I'm satisfied with the motion that, that we go back to the growing board and negotiate with the plan, with Plan Six and the board of supervisors plan.
I'm going for a negotiating.
Let's look at the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Now, now, just up here, y'all. So, I can do it. Get it clear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, all say aye. Let me, I, we got, listen.
Turn around to your folks.
Listen. Listen. Only ones up here can vote, okay? So, don't say nothing. Please. Just the only one can say aye. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Only one will say nay.
Nay.
So, now, the motion is two to three. So, next motion on the floor is that the board of supervisors, that the board of supervisors, there was a motion on the floor that the board of supervisors, and I'm gonna ask the attorney to read that motion, so I make sure I got it right.
Okay, let me, let me get this. Let me go back here and find it. This motion was made and seconded. The motion would be that the plan of June 21st, or the plan that was advertised for in the newspaper for supervisory redistricting, be approved and as a redistricting plan for, based on the two thousand sentences.
Who made that motion?
That motion, I, I show, was made by Supervisor Trubal, and then it was seconded by Supervisor Hodges.
You see it all there?
There's a motion on the floor. Motion is that the board of supervisors adopt the board of supervisor plan that was dated...
I believe it's the June 21st plan that was advertised. Now, is that the correct motion, is it supervisor?
June 21st plan that was, that was advertised. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Nay?
Nay.
Motion is carried. Now, we're discussing...
It's about a, in two votes. I didn't see his name.
Well, that would be for itself. You don't think about it. I don't even vote.
And you voted for that?
Aye for that plan.
Oh, he voted for that.
Next thing, we're gonna discuss the procedures, how we gonna move, how the plan will be moved from here. What gonna happen here? We ask the attorney to discuss what the procedures from here.
There is, uh... Now, we, of course, we have good... Uh, there are two ways that the plan can be considered and that they will have to consider. One is, an action can be filed in the federal district court of the District of Columbia is one possibility. The other possibility is filing with the Justice Department in Washington, DC. So, those are two, two approaches they have available to them on any change in voting law. And so, you know, the, you can either submit to the Justice Department, or you can file a suit in federal district court of the District of Columbia.
So, what's your recommendation? What would you do? I mean, we got to make people know what procedure we gonna move it forward. We gonna send it on to the Justice Department. Is that correct?
Well, if, if, if y'all make a motion to do, to submit it to the Justice Department...
I thought that was part of his motion.
He didn't...
Yeah. Well, I'll make the motion.
Make that motion to do that.
Well, you, for a aye, you submit it to the Justice Department, whatever documents.
So, you make, you wanna make a Section Five submission to the Justice Department. Okay, that's what I'm writing down.
That's good enough.
Can I get a second? Moving probably second that the plan that just been adopted by the board of supervisor, is sent to the Justice Department, and all of a sudden, documents. Question, myself. Do the, what documents that should be that goes to the Justice Department?
Now, this, the Justice Department, the, the code of federal regulations is pretty specific. What I say is all documentation acquired by the code of federal regulation, and there's several of them. One thing, we would certainly have copies of all the affected materials, all the demographic information, all the population figures. And we have transcripts, and we will be, we would need to be forwarding those. And just any and all papers that would be helpful and explanatory in what, what has been done.
Yes, sir. So, included in the submission to the Justice Department will be each of the three plans submitted by the community in addition to the plan adopted by the board, correct?
I will review the regulation, but I think that as a good course of practice, I'll, of course, review the regulation. I think as a general proposition, it's a good thing to give the most information possible. Not to be repetitive, but, you know, any, any documentation that they've had that's been presented will be in the transcript. And, and so, each of the plans that's been submitted will be part of the transcript that is submitted, and will be part of the papers that are submitted. Everything that was submitted, all that will be with the submission.
So, also, as, as I understand the practice, the board, in making this submission, is required to submit to the Justice Department a list of names of people from the community who have demonstrated an interest in this issue and knowledge about it, so that the Justice Department has an opportunity to talk to community. about it, so that the Justice Department has an opportunity to talk to community people and their representatives about their views of both the plan that was adopted and, by the Board, and the process that the Board used, uh, to adopt, to adopt the plan. That's, that's always been the practice, and so that the, the Justice Department attorney who is assigned to this case or this plan has people to talk to who are not the supervisors, and who are not the supervisor's people. So, will that also be done?
Uh, and, and, you know, this is, of course, a legal matter for the Board, but I would say that what I scrupulously wanna do is see that the requirements, that all information that's required in the code of federal regulation will be submitted, and that would include, uh, any, uh, anything that would be, uh, provided for under that code section. So, I can see...
You saying, saying that CFR incorporates all of the Justice Department regulations?
No, I don't wanna make any opinion on what they do, but I think, as, as to following the proper submission guidelines of the Justice Department, I think that I, I would want to see that accomplished, and I think that will be accomplished.
So, you, but we also have a right to submit whatever documentation we want to the Justice Department.
Right, and, and there's an address that can be provided for, you know, so any documentation or anything like that, and that would be important, and you, uh, of course, are aware of it, as am I, but, you know, that address will be provided.
And we also have the right to call the Justice Department to talk to them to visit with them, correct?
And that is your right to do.
Just trying to make clear that we all understand this together.
I, we've been through, how many, how many have we been through? About 15? This is my, our 17th redistricting hearing together.
I don't know, I have to check.
Mr. Lewis?
Mr. Lewis, I heard you made a statement, you saying that you and Bobby was also in the dark. What guarantee that you and Bobby still won't be in the dark? Would you have the option to get the examiner's old paper? Would you be able to get a copy of everything on the Justice Department? Who will file that paper? Hold up, hold up, hold up.
Me, we?
Who, who would be able to make sure all proper documents, ladies? Who be able to examine this document, so that it's going to the Justice Department? Would your statement go to the Justice Department? Would the minutes go to the Justice Department, saying that you reject the plan? What guarantee does this body have, saying all the information that's going together is going to be going to the Justice Department? Since you was on the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Lewis, and Mr. Banks, and you, you all still in the dark, so what guarantee does that make sure this is going to be going to the Justice Department?
Uh, that's your question, as member of the Board of Supervisors, I'm gonna request that a copy of this film, that'll be documented by, uh, the day, since we didn't have a court reporter today, I'm gonna ask a copy of the film, be a copy of this alone with me, any other documents, and I will also request a copy, that way if anyone in my district, or anyone in the way in the county wanna see what some of the documents they might see. And I, and if they come and ask me for them, I have some documents, so that's my request.
Mr. Lewis, one thing I wanna ask, uh, that you and Bobby might need to consider doing, is looking for y'all to another attorney, because, uh, you're gonna have to have good legal advice when it comes to matters that you are not, uh, really that aware of, and I know you are good with the redistricting, you know, when it come down on, on the county level, but I don't believe that Tom Rummels is representing full interest of the Board, and, uh, I, I think that all five supervisors, if you're gonna be represented by the same attorney, and then there is no way, you as the chairman of the Board, definitely shouldn't be in the dark about nothing. You should be the first one that... So, I'm requesting that, uh, you and Bobby possibly look into the situation of whether you need to hire your own attorney, uh, whether Tom Rummels think that he can represent everybody, because he has not represented you and Bobby, and I'm, I'm gonna tell you, with this plan, and with, with what has, what has happened here in redistricting.
We have a motion on the floor, at this time, all in favor, say aye? No, Tom, no, we have a motion on the floor.
Motion for you and Bobby, how you gonna turn?
No, no, we have a motion on the floor to submit this plan to the Justice Department. We have a motion on the floor. Oh, we, we, without any motion, we second it. Stan made the motion, Johnny seconded it. We have, we've discussion on the motions, we have a discussion on what need to go up there. So, now we need to go and carry the motion. Is that correct, Tom?
Yeah, that was right.
We hadn't carry. So, when Johnny, uh, Stan made, Johnny seconded it, we just got into a discussion of what gonna be sent. Okay, all in favor, say aye? Nay, nay? Okay, is there anything else to come about the supervisor redistricting? To the ones that don't know, that also the Board of Supervisors is also responsible for justice court redistricting, and we done had public hearings on that, uh, two public hearings. At the last public hearing, there was a, a cross from the community that adopt the Board of Supervisor Plan that had been drawn by that microphone for the two justice court districts, uh, District One and District Two. District Two on the west, District One on east. So, Dan, any questions concerning that? At this time, the chairman turn a motion to adopt the Rigby-Johnson, we just a court district to be submitted to the United States Justice Department. Moving proper second, that we adopted justice, the plans that were done by Rigby and Johnson for Justice Court of Tana County, District One and District Two. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Nay? Ayes having, his motion is carried.
And, Mr. Lewis, can I say one thing?
You have a minute for that. Situation, right to justice. Go ahead. Y'all, y'all gotta do it.
On your justice court plan, now, if there's any changes, uh, any modifications gotta be made, that affected any, would you please, like you have not done in the past, not, uh, overlook the redistricting committee now, it's very important that we get our information at a time and fashion, so we'll know what we need to do also. So, would you please, and, and with, uh, whosever is, is disseminating this information, make sure the chairman know, that, uh, we need to know before you all send that, uh, paperwork up now, because we, we agreed to it as it was down on there, as we wrote the line. If, uh, uh, what's the name they wrote, uh, Fairview Road? If, if Fairview Road is the southern boundary, is the southernmost boundary, and then come back to 32, 32 Highway for the northern boundary, and then all the way over to 35 Highway for the eastern boundary, and then all the way to the west side, if that's the boundary, that, that, if that's the block that we're picking up, from the first Blue Cave Road coming from way, all the way to 35 Highway, everything on the right side of 32, all the way to Fairview High, Fairview Road. Now, if that's what we're picking up, and then that's what we agreeing to.
So, now I'm asking, I'm gonna be asking the chairman of the Board of Supervisors District Five, that, uh, that we instruct their attorney, and Mr. Dawes, or whoever else gonna be dealing with the plan, to put file on that, and that way you will provide, as a justice court judge, you provide with a copy, Mr. Steve Alff, you provide with a copy of that, and also, all Board of Supervisors be provided with a copy of all the plans that's going forward to supervisor, and be, and be stamped filed. Any more questions?
My name is Chris Gaudy. The plan that, Plan Six, we wanted to see about, would it also be going to Justice Department now?
Let me say this, uh, if the transcript will be going to the Justice Department, and I believe that is in the transcript.
Yeah, it is.
So, I think that that will be, and the regulations will be followed, uh, you know, if they, uh, choose to, if they voted to chose to go to justice, uh, at this point, and, uh, so, uh, that would be included.
In addition to that, would there be any African Americans that just, uh, name that they could contain?
Uh, I think that...
Of course, Mr. Lewis said that he's gonna, that I'll be following.
I think, now, one thing that I think could be done, let's assume a submission to justice, is that, uh, you know, there will be a, a number that you can call, an address that you can write to make input, uh, to them, but, uh, you know, I'm sure that, uh, that will be, uh, that is, upon matter of public record, it'll be provided. But, uh, you know, all the people that have, you know, that appeared at the public hearings, obviously that will be included with this mission.
Any more questions? Fair enough, got anything else? Is not the chairman, the plan just meeting, a John?
Please say, please say.
He said, he said, yeah.